Good, 10 o'clock? Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order if everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America on one nation, on one ground, in this whole liberty and justice.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
Motion, second.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Anyone? Okay. Seeing that there is no one, we are going to present a proclamation now declaring May 15th, 2024 as Abington Heights Mock Trial Champions Day in Lackawanna County. So I'm going to read the proclamation and we'll call the group up to receive it. And we're very excited. Whereas today, we celebrate the outstanding success and achievements of the Abington Heights High School Mock Trial Team, the 2024 High School Mock Trial National Champions, and the 2024 Pennsylvania Bar Association Mock Trial State Champions. These young men and women have proudly succeeded with great accomplishments as hard-working students outside of the classroom and as members of the Abington Heights community. And whereas, Abington Heights, the first national champions from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, defeated Texas in the final trial at the Leonard L. Williams Justice Center in Wilmington, Delaware. They defeated mock trial teams from Tennessee, North Carolina, Kentucky, and Indiana on the way to the final. And whereas, with six seniors, four juniors, and five freshmen, Abington Heights defeated rivals Scranton Prep for district honors, Palmerton High School to capture region 10 honors, then argued four trials successfully at the state championships in the Dauphin County Courthouse, including the final trial against Spring Grove High School. And whereas, the 2024 Abington Heights Mock Trial Team is comprised of, and I apologize if I butcher anybody's last name, Ava Shadlouskas, Madeline Harold, Serena Moktari, Ava Whalen, Amishi Amit, Anyana Padki, Aiden Lamb, Zachary Regal, Dane Hugler, J.T. Healy, Will Newton, Thomas Rusini, Nolan Moore, Henry Mahoney, and Chris Cummins. The team, along with coaches Amy Kelly and Jennifer Tar and advisors attorney Dan Cummins, attorney Jody Healy, and Ann Cummins, brought pride and high esteem to the Abington Heights community. Now therefore, we Bill Gahan, Matt McGoyan, and Chris Chirmack, commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim and recognize May 15th, 2024 as Abington Heights Mock Trial Champions Day in Lackawanna County. Thank you. Congratulations. And if everybody could come up, we'd like to present you with the proclamation and take a picture. And would one of the representatives from Abington Heights want to say a few words? Somebody like to come up and speak? I know you're good at that, so you're not going to have a problem with it. Just don't argue with us. We're, that's related.
Don't worry, I will not be doing that today. So hello, everyone. My name is Madeline Harold. I'm a senior member as well as a captain of the Abington Heights Mock Trial Team. I just wanted to thank you for your time today and the invitation to attend this meeting, as well as tell you a little bit about mock trial and the team's success, if that's okay. So mock trial is an academic extracurricular in which teams receive a simulated legal case, either criminal or civil, and then have to use exhibits and provided witness statements to create a prosecution and defense case. Team members can take the roles of either witnesses, where they develop a character based off of an affidavit, or attorneys, where they present examinations, arguments, and learn legal rules of evidence. Teams then go on to compete in real courtrooms with real attorneys and real judges scoring their trials. Mock trial develops many incredibly important skills, such as public speaking, thinking on your feet, working as a team, and having full trust in the team that you have built around you. I'm sure in your positions, you work with people of many different personalities, and the skills that we develop in mock trial interpersonally will continue to help us throughout whatever career path we decide to pursue. So as far as our season, as was stated earlier, we were able to advance undefeated through the district and regional competitions, and advanced to the state competition, which was held in Harrisburg on March 22nd and 23rd. For the third time in four years, we were able to bring home the state title. And the hard work was not over there, however, we had to then start preparing for nationals. So since cases are assigned on a state basis, on a state level, the nationals competition has its own case, and you work on a compressed time schedule. So essentially, we had to do what we were able to do in five months for the state competition in five weeks between April and May. The, every single person on our team, every member, every advisor, they showed up. We put in so many long hours. We were at school every day for late hours, working on our practice, practicing and working on our case. We had long weekend practices. Oftentimes, we were the last people to leave the school before the custodial staff had to come in and set the security alarms for the night. So needless to say, an incredible amount of work went into this. So we then went to the national competition in Wilmington, Delaware. It was held from May 2nd to May 5th. And for the first time in Abington Heights history, we were able to take home the national title. And not only was it the first time in Abington Heights history, we were actually the first team from Pennsylvania ever to win a national title in the over 40 years of the national mock trial competition. We have so many people to thank for our success, but first off, we would not be anywhere near the level of success without our wonderful teacher-coaches, Ms. Jennifer Tar and Ms. Amy Kelly, as well as our attorney-advisors, Mr. Dan Cummins, Mr. Jody Healy, and our performance advisor, Mrs. Ann Cummins. They led us through this competition with humility and grace and encouraged us to stay true to our team motto, which was to always be the most hard-working, most humble, and most kind team in every single round of competition. I am so incredibly proud of every single person sitting back there today, and I'm sure I speak for all the seniors when I say this was the best way imaginable to end our mock trial careers. We are just so humbled and grateful by the support from our community. We are excited to announce that we will be ending our incredible season with a trip to Washington, D.C. on Memorial Day to meet with the President and the First Lady for breakfast. We are just incredibly honored to be able to represent our school, to be able to represent our county, and we thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. All of you have made Lackawanna County really, really proud, and a great thanks to your coaches, your teachers. They've obviously done an amazing job with all of you, and again, we're really proud of you, and I hope you got the day off of school today.
Well, I'd like to say something too. So PJ, Donnie, watch out. Looks like we got more lawyers coming at you, so. But as a 1981 graduate myself of Abington Heights, I just commend you for all that you've done and what you've, how you've represented our area, and I wish you all the best in your, whatever you decide to do in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the meeting, we'll start with ordinance 24-0118.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is ordinance, the first reading of ordinance 293. It's an ordinance for the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation notes of the county in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $14,500,000 to provide funds for a certain project of the county, which consists of the following: one, refunding a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation bonds, Series B of 2016; two, refunding a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation bond, Series B of 2016; three, refunding a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation bond, Series 2017; four, refunding a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation bonds of Series B of 2020; and five, paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the notes. Whereas the county has determined to accept the proposal of PNC Capital Markets LLC for the purchase of the notes, now therefore be enacted and ordained pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance, the county hereby authorizes and directs the issuance of one or more series of general obligation notes in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $14,500,000. The board determines that the debt to be incurred pursuant to this ordinance will be, which will be evidenced by the notes shall be a non-electoral debt of the county. The board shall and does accept, is hereby accept, the proposal of the purchaser for the purchase of the notes in accordance with the terms and conditions of the ordinance. Each series of the notes when issued will be a general obligation of the county. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to contract with the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank of Dunmore, Pennsylvania as the paying agent. All expenses incurred in connection with the issuance of the notes shall be paid out of the proceeds derived from the issuance of the notes. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly and severely to do any and all other things necessary to effectuate the issuance, execution, delivery, and the sale of the notes of the financing of this project. Mr. Chairman, this is a restructuring of the bonds to lower our bond payment by approximately $5 million in 2024. Here to speak upon that is our bond counsel, Mr. Brian Kozlansky.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As was mentioned, this, that's our, this ordinance only refunds for debt service payments that are coming due in September to provide that budget relief that you've been discussing. It doesn't extend the debt of any of those pieces of debt. They will mature within the existing amortization that they have for those four pieces, and that's really all it does. It's just a straight restructuring. There's no additional new money. There's nothing else happening in this ordinance. And I know you've been discussing it. I'm happy to answer any questions, but it is those four September payments, two on September 1 and two on September 15, I believe.
So Brian, just one quick question for you here. Without this, right, we would be looking at another significant gap in our 2024 budget, right? I mean, this is, this is a major step towards stability.
These payments amount to a little over $10 million for that, those four payments. So without that, that $10 million has to come from someplace. And I believe this restructuring was contemplated in the budget for this year.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And we'll be back for second reading on the 5th, and we'll do the advertising to get ready for that, but everything, all the team members are getting ready for that meeting and having it, you know, ready to go, because we do have to have it closed before September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry, I know this is just the first reading. Okay. Thank you. Okay, resolution 24-0130.
This is current, approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 370801-372230, inclusive totaling County's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $7,68,858.41. Adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0130?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0119.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging Contract Amendments. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging Contract Amendments with the United Neighborhood Centers and Interm Health Care Services Incorporated for the fiscal year '23 through '24. Adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Thank you. Good morning. These amendments allow the Area Agency on Aging to enter into a one-time agreement for additional funding to United Neighborhood Centers, so they can provide additional health and wellness funds to older adults that are 60 and older, and also allow them to continue coordinating emergency shelter placement for older adults in Lackawanna County. Interim health care is being awarded an additional one-time payment of $6,692 to help disseminate credible information, provide health education, and administer COVID-19 vaccinations. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0119?
Motion.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0120.
Entering into an intergovernmental agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a shared housing and reinforced exchange program intergovernmental agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Aging. Adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director McDonald.
The Pennsylvania Department of Aging has developed the Shared Housing and Resource Exchange Program to address the increasing needs for affordable housing options for seniors and seniors with disabilities in the Commonwealth. Among other things, the program is designed to bring together homeowners who want to share their home with home seekers who are looking for housing in exchange for rent, help around the house, or a combination of both. The Pennsylvania Department of Aging administers this program through the county area agencies on aging, and this agreement will allocate $87,000 for the first fiscal year to fund a full-time position.
Any questions for Mrs. McDonald? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0120?
Motion.
Second.
And a motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0122.
Entering into memorandums of understanding with the city of Scranton, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Scranton for the implementation of the 2023 Bernie Justice Assistance Grant Program for the police, Scranton Police Department in the amount of $93,898. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is also hereby enter into a memorandum of understanding with the city of Scranton for the implementation of the 2022 Bernie Justice Assistance Grant Program for the Scranton Police Department Operations Center in the amount of $108,975. Adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody from the city of Scranton here today, but this is, basically, the county is helping the city of Scranton get this grant money for, through their Scranton Police Department.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, may I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0122?
Motion.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0123.
Approving an agent for the FEMA PM Emergency Protective Measures Grant Program. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby designate Director Kristin Amignata to function as the designated agent to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Lackawanna County Vaccine Administration and Testing Grant Program. And the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby ratify and authorize the submission of this official designation of agent form for the FEMA Emergency Protective Measures Grant Program and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. Adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Amignata.
Thanks, Chief. Commissioners, as was stated, this is merely a formality to change me into being the signatory from my predecessor to allow FEMA to continue to reimburse the county for any and all costs that were associated during, during COVID. So whether it be, I think it could be, and the chief would know better than I would, but almost over 100 vaccine, vaccine opportunities throughout the county amongst PPE and so many other efforts that the county made during this time period, but this would offer me the opportunity to be the signatory to get the reimbursements from FEMA for the county.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay. May I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0123?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0124.
Establishing the Combat Inflation Business Grant Phase II. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners does hereby establish Lackawanna County Combat Inflation Grant, Business Grant Phase II for local businesses in Lackawanna County with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. This grant will provide assistance to small businesses to mitigate financial hardship resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, and does hereby direct the Director of Planning and Economic Development to sign and authorize all documents related to this grant program. Adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Amignata.
Thank you, Chief. The Combat Inflation Grant Phase I was extremely successful. We had the financial resources to provide $5,000 to each applicant that, of course, applied and, and filled out their application in completion, as well as showed taxes and their revenue loss during COVID time period. It was so, I think, I believe that we had about 210 applicants and were able to fund 100. So this would provide us an opportunity to open this back up publicly to for-profit businesses and come in and provide funding for another 100 applicants. We, one part of this would be the need to, for any business, would have to have been in business in 2019, which would have been their last full year, being able to show a full revenue year before impacts from COVID, and then another two years of taxes for '20 and '21 to show the impacts that COVID had on their business. And also, this goes from one employee to 100, and that one employee can actually be the owner of the business as well. And these are $5,000 grants for, again, the combat inflation. We are hoping that with, with an approval of this, that the application will open May 31st, and the applications will close July 31st.
That's great. Thank you very much. Any questions?
This gives the opportunity to other businesses that didn't receive any grants.
Thank you so much for that, Commissioner. Yes, any, anyone that received this, this grant in the first round, those 100 businesses, would not be, would not be able to apply for the second round. We want to be able to spread it far and wide to all those that need help.
I think we had almost, probably 200 at that point.
Yes, we did. So we're, we're looking forward to probably likely many more than that this time around.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0124?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question?
Yeah, you know, our, our local businesses are, are what makes our home here in Lackawanna County so special, and, you know, we all understand that they're still facing economic pressure because of inflation due to the COVID-19 pandemic. That's why it's important for us to continue to try to find ways to help our local businesses, because we understand that financial assistance at this critical time can be the difference between businesses staying in business or closing permanently, and that's why this was established again. And, you know, if qualified, these funds can, can help support ongoing business operations, support payroll and benefits, costs to retain employees, mortgage, rent, utility, workforce initiatives, and expansion. Again, our local businesses are the glue that, that holds our community together, and here at the county, we want to ensure that we are doing all that we can to continue to strengthen our relationships with our, our local businesses. So, so this is, this is really fantastic.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0125.
Approving a contract extension. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve a one-year contract extension with Waste Management, 13 Peggy Park Way, Dunmore, as attached here, too. Adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman, CFO Balzoni is at C-CAP for a meeting today. He talked to three particular vendors about our waste management and picking these up, and he was able to renegotiate this contract with a savings of $10,000, and this is the contract that he has talked to you, the three of you about.
Okay, very good. Any questions? May I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0125?
Motion.
And a motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0128.
This is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County regarding eligibility under LERTA for property tax exemption for certain property located in Covington Township. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners is hereby approve the request of, to retroactively grant 10-year LERTA tax abatement for the Covington Industrial Park Lot Number 5 as of January 1, 2024. Adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our solicitor, Mr. Don Fredericksen.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a resolution seeking a retroactive application of a LERTA that was approved. It was approved by Covington Township and, back in 2012, and by Lackawanna County and the North Pocono School District in 2013. It's a piece of property that the township had determined to be deteriorated property. It was a 10-year exemption, however, when the project was completed, there was a piece of paper that was not filed, and as such, it didn't make its way to the assessor's office, so they did not apply the LERTA. So they're seeking for us to apply it retroactive to January 1 of this year. And here to speak on, and if you have any questions, is David Shute, Attorney Shute. About the development or the project itself. The property has been developed, it has been built on, and it does employ, it is an employer that has brought jobs into the area.
As Don pointed out, again, my name's David Shute of the Law Firm of Troutman Pepper Hamilton Sanders, LLP. We represent the developer of the property. Don pointed out there was administrative oversight as the project was being completed to properly apply the LERTA, and we're asking to have it retroactively reinstated as of January 1 of this year. Thank you very much, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, may I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0128?
Motion.
Motion and a second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0129.
This is also a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County regarding eligibility under LERTA for property tax exemption for a certain property located in Jessup Borough. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners does hereby approve the request retroactively grant a LERTA tax abatement for the property known as BHR Development Group LLC as of January 1, 2023. Once again, adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is held on May 15, 2024. Once again, here's Director, our Solicitor, Fredericksen.
Thank you, Commissioners. Same situation here. This property is in Jessup, Jessup Borough, determined the property to be deteriorated. They approved the LERTA, the school district up there, the Mid Valley School District approved the LERTA, and the county approved the LERTA in 2019. The developer moved ahead, constructed the building, and improvements to the property in 2022. They, again, are seeking to have it retroactively applied. They, again, forgot to file the proper paperwork for our assessor to begin the process of applying the LERTA. So they're going back to January 1, 2023, however, because they did complete construction in 2022 for the property. And here to speak about that is Dan Walsh, who is their property manager.
Hello, thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dan Walsh. I'm the Senior Vice President for Development of Transwestern Development Partners. We invested about a little bit over $50 million in developing this property into a 750,000 square foot distribution facility, then on speculation, then leased the building to Blue Buffalo, who now employs over 200 people at the property. So that's kind of an overview. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. May we, may I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0129?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 24-0131.
This is appointment to the County of Lackawanna Transportation System Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individual to the County of Lackawanna Transportation System Authority, Martha Dewar, 33A Park Gardens, Scranton. It's a five-year term, effective immediately and expire on December 31, 2028. Adopted regularly, meaning the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve resolution 24-0129? May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0131?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0132.
These are appointments to the Film and Multimedia Commission. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Film and Multimedia Commission. Mr. Robert East, Lessinger, 213 Leach Hill Road, South Abingdon, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2026. Mr. Douglas Fink, 211 North Estate Street, Clark Summitt, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2026. Mr. David Castily, 310 Dunlap Court, Peckville, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2026. Mr. Johnny Farkas, 415 Arthur Avenue, Apartment 2, Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2027. Mr. Stephen Cognetti, 171 Carbonell Road, Waverly, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2027. Mr. Daniel H. Pershing, 3151 Chase Road, Shavertown, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2027. Ms. Desiree Zalinski, 936 Clay Avenue, Elephant, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2028. Mr. Anthony C. Benardi, 105 Winter Rules Road, Waverly, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2028. And Mr. Robert M. Savinkas, 82 Lincoln Avenue, Carbonell, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2028. Adopted at regular meeting of Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 15, 2024. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-0132?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Okay, motion 24-0126. A motion to accept a proposal from Interstate Safety Service Incorporated, 1301 Winola Road, Clark Summitt, Pennsylvania, 18411, for rental of concrete barriers and attenuator as per PENDOT at a cost of $8,200 for the inbound lane. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question, we have our Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McGuigan, who will speak on this.
So we are starting the mural this summer, as I think most of you know, and this is for the inbound lane that, when they finish the outbound lane, that will probably start in July. And as it was noted, this is all mandated by PENDOT. For safety, we have to rent this equipment.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. McGuigan? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Motion 24-0127. Motion to accept a proposal from Rocco Grandi Company for pressure washing and painting of the retaining walls in the Biden Expressway at a cost of $14,748. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. On the question, here again is Ms. McGuigan.
So in order to start again, it's really important that we clean the wall. Over the winter, it gets really dirty, and that will affect the paint. So step one, which will start the first week of June, will be to clean the wall, but since we've also decided to put in the light installation, we would like to paint the walls under the bridge. So this is a proposal for that, washing and painting.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
My name's Rick Little. I live in Scranton. I've been trying, I was, for the first time, I spoke at the meeting last week, and I filed the instructions, called the secretary for each one of you Commissioners, and no one got back to me, and then I called again, no one got back to me. But this is my experience over the last 10 years, even before you were, any of you were part of the board. There's just no input from people, and I'm listening to all these resolutions, like I was at the Scranton Housing, or the Scranton City Council meeting, and there's all these different boards, you know, like the Office of Community Development, Scranton City Planning Commission, Scranton Redevelopment Authority Board. They sound, you know, like the same board to me. I don't know, but I would like an opportunity to be able to put, get information to you, because I go to these, before all these people continue going through the board, and especially, like today, I'm hearing all about COVID, and there's too many people in this town that got used to the idea where you can work from home, you know, stay away from people, wear a mask, or your business will be fined. And I can see there's going to be another crisis like COVID. I mean, I've been looking at COVID coming down the pike since the early 90s in the Agenda 21 of the United Nations, and they're flying the United Nations flag over there. And I believe the next problem is going to be water, and it's going to come really soon. And, you know, the Medicare Part C, they're deciding where you have to shop. You have to shop at Rite Aid. Well, they closed down the Rite Aid. You have to shop at CVS, and you have to shop at Walmart. But they don't sell any kind of the water filters that clean out the lead, or mainly the fluoride, but also the arsenic and all the things. And I hear people discussing, you know, the water companies and the ways to get the water through, and it's like, hey, we're done. But it's going to come a time, I mean, as an example, I go to the library and I get this lead safe thing, and I read the Board, Office of Community Development, and all these boards do is, you know, lead exposure, children of lower IQ and all this stuff, but this is from only paint chips. That's all they talk about here. There's lead in the water. There's lead coming, there's metals coming down from the chemtrails from the sky. People are getting sick, and if people don't know how to deal with it, they're going to have a short life, you know, because all the filters that they sell, all that the media and the government promotes, these are charcoal filters on the PRR and the Brita and everything. There's only one, I've done a lot of research, there's only one filter, clearly filtered, that takes out fluoride. Why fluoride is in our water in the first place? And I'm so tired of just all this COVID stuff being extended, and the solutions to these problems, especially the housing and the Agency on Aging, and it has to do with the communication, because I call to get an appointment with one of you on the phone, and no one calls me back, but that's the situation everywhere, especially agencies like Agency on Aging, when I was applying for Governor Wolf's E-Rat money, you know? And then I go to court, and the judge decides, well, you have to reapply, and they're sending out, they're sending out this privatized stuff. They privatize the inspections for code enforcement, they privatize.
Excuse me, sir. Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like an appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Emma Graham. From July 10, 2023, until last Thursday, May 9, 2024, I was employed as the Health Policy and Promotion Manager for the Lackawanna County Department of Health. Commissioners, I had hoped that we could have this conversation in a more private setting. However, when we were asked about this during the meeting in which we were laid off, we were told that we would, you'd only be addressing the public. So I'm here now as a member of the public, ready to discuss. We've heard a lot about how important transparency is to this administration. I wish that transparency had extended to the 26 individuals who were unexpectedly laid off last Thursday. We were all told time and time again that the application for state certification was being reviewed for submission. We hadn't been told about plans to close the Department of Health until the moment we were being laid off. For the record, we were not actually offered positions with this new family pathways program. We were offered the opportunity to express interest in future employment with the program, but we were not given any information regarding the number of available positions, the types of positions, or salary. I don't think that the Department of Health was given a fair shot, despite all of the hard work done by our team over the past two years. We attended and organized dozens and dozens of events, including national night outs, Kids in the Park, a summer event that we hosted to address childhood food insecurity during the summer months, weekly volunteering at Children's Hunger Outreach Project, monthly tabling at Friends of the Poor, community intervention centers, and United Neighborhood Centers, weekly events at senior high-rises, and much, much more. At these events, we distributed around 600 COVID tests, close to 300 boxes of Narcan, and provided blood pressure screenings and health, safety, and wellness education. These events were much more than just giving out brochures, though. We had real tangible impacts on the people that we worked with. For example, a few weeks ago at a high-rise event, one of our nurses, who's sitting over here right now, was providing routine blood pressure screenings, something we'd been providing at almost every single community event, and she caught a man who was in severe hypertension. That day, he went to the hospital and had his medications adjusted. Couple of weeks later, he contacted our team to thank us for checking his blood pressure, and he said that if it hadn't been for our nurse, he never would have gotten treatment. In addition to the countless events we took part in, our team was a part of the Lackawanna Recovery Coalition, Lackawanna Interagency Council, Lackawanna County Systems of Care, the Prevention Education Consortium, the Hunger Task Force, the Lackawanna County Overdose Fatality Review Team, the Northeast Immunization Coalition, and the NIPA Aging Alliance Network. We also met with colleges, universities, charter schools, Montessori schools, and every single school district in the county to understand what their needs are. In response to the needs that we saw, we applied for and received thousands of dollars in grant funding for programs to address childhood food insecurity and safety and preparedness. All of this funding and program planning will now go to waste. We have worked tirelessly to engage with our community, understand their needs, and most importantly, build trust with the public, something that this county has long struggled to do. I think that if you took the time to speak with anyone we've engaged with over the last two years, from school administrators to that man at the high-rise, they could tell you about our impact and the importance of our work. As a public health professional with a Master's of Public Health in Infectious Disease Epidemiology from Cornell, I am disappointed and deeply, deeply concerned with the decision not to move forward with the Department of Health. I can certainly understand the need to make difficult decisions in the face of the county's current financial situation. However, I cannot fathom the decision to cut the Department of Health, especially in a post-pandemic era. I spoke a lot about the day-to-day work that our team was doing, but I would be remiss not to acknowledge how critical it is to have a local health department to respond to disease outbreaks. From sexually transmitted infections to pandemics, local health departments are much better equipped to quickly and efficiently monitor disease spread, collect data, and respond to outbreaks in state or federal agencies. Our department had six case investigators and epidemiologists who were highly trained, prepared, and eager to do this work. So Commissioners, I hope that the three of you, none of whom have any training in public health, can handle the next pandemic or environmental disaster, as well as 26 doctors, nurses, epidemiologists, environmental specialists, and public health professionals could have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
My name is Katrina Bauer. I reside in Jessup with my husband and three children. Until this past Thursday, I was an employee of Lackawanna County for nearly two decades. I started my career in emergency service as a 911 dispatcher. I moved up to 911 supervisor, CAD supervisor, part of EMA staff, JTAC officer, part of the decon team, and so much more. In 2023, ultimately, I was forced out of the 911 center, took a lateral transfer to be the emergency preparedness manager for the newly-established Department of Health. See all my unanswered emails from November 29, 2021, May 10, 2022, February 15, 2023. Clearly, they didn't help my situation at all. This past Thursday on May 9, county officials stood in a room in front of everyone and said that emergency preparedness wasn't essential. What is the meaning of emergency preparedness? The term refers to the steps you take to make sure you are safe before, during, and after an emergency or a natural disaster. We focus on five phases of emergency management: prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery, all of which I have done for the last 18 years in Lackawanna County. I can honestly say until 2021, I did not have any problems working at the 911 center. The former director was replaced with the current director. The current director at the time was a longtime county employee, building maintenance manager and Q&amp;A. He was now entitled to run the 911 center, had all the keys to the castle. Again, I had minimal problems. One problem I did have is myself, I was one of two women in the outer office management, one of two women. I was the one who had to miss my kids' sporting events, I had to miss their doctor's appointments, but the other one is the director's wife. In 2024, you implemented a fraternization policy. Everybody had to sign it, everybody had to acknowledge it. Let's rewind. I have met some of the most incredible people in emergency preparedness in the 911 center. These individuals are incredible. They are the lifeline to this community. I get that we have to focus on CYS and children, but who do you think does all the clearances for these children that are getting placed in Lackawanna County? The 911 center. Who calls the police when they need help? They call the 911 center. I loved my career. I was very good at it. I had to leave because I wasn't being heard, and after you are heard, you're treated differently. I believe the best way they explained it to me when I did my transfer paperwork is they stated, "The 911 center might be losing you, but Lackawanna County isn't." That's the respect I got, not on this past Thursday. I'm not going to waste any more time on why people shouldn't be in positions and why people have job titles that really don't even pertain to their job. His wife is his administrative assistant. She handles payroll and scheduling. What are the most important things to people who are employed? They want their schedules taken care of, they want to be able to have vacation time. It's a conflict. You all have to look at this. It is a major conflict. Again, back to the unanswered emails. I emailed HR on Friday. I stressed my concerns. I even offered them to relay this information to you. I said, "You guys don't have a job for me, but there's one up on the hill where my heart has been for the last 18 years." I got no response. No response. I am one of six women from 2021 to 2023 who have filed complaints and were not heard. One of six women. It is uncomfortable to report that type of stuff anyways, but as a woman, we have to fight harder. Why? We teach people in this world, see something, say something, and in Lackawanna County for our employees, it's more like, see something, say something, find a way for him to hide it. It's not fair. It is not fair. You've lost out on a good employee. COVID-19, I did everything. Emergency management? They need more people. There's one person up there doing the job, and I helped him tirelessly, and we did a very good job at it. You just hired somebody two months ago to be his assistant. If you didn't know that I was going to have a job, why didn't you look into me? I lost everything. I have three children. I have done a lot of good for this county, and I've gotten very little respect. I could have went and got lawyers, I could have filed lawsuits. This is my career. I know I'm going to be working the rest of my life.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Would anyone else like to address the board?
My name's Shannon, and I'm a registered nurse. My questions are directed to our commissioners. This is in response to your closing of the Department of Health. First, we'd like to say that we understand how stressed the county's financial situation is. However, the county took a grant for the Department of Health in which we purchased a building and a fully functioning clinic. Will the county need to give that back to the state and what will become of the clinic space that was meant for the Department of Health nurses? I'm very sad that as a nurse, I see every day how undervalued healthcare is, all of our staff and all of our nurses. I was just heartened that our commissioners couldn't even meet with us face to face. Our jobs were gone without any consideration, and on Nurses Week, no less. You've decided to contract nurses out while you had nurses on your own staff, dedicated nurses working in the community. I had the opportunity to offer health screenings at the healthy aging campuses and senior high rises. One routine screening that I conducted, I heard an abnormal heart rhythm, which, undiagnosed, put them at risk of heart attack and stroke. They were diagnosed with AFib, and I had to go under a surgical procedure to correct this. Many of our screenings addressed major health concerns and medication issues. To my department, I am so proud of the work they've done without any recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
My name's Alex Douglas. I think many of you guys know who I am. And we're all familiar with that September 9th flood that crushed our whole entire county, basically. These people right here, specifically this Katrina who just spoke, I'm here to just tell you how much work she did and put in for us personally to have our house, my family house condemned. They worked hours and hours putting stuff together, putting plans together, providing food, and helped her, my parents, who were, you know, suffering during all this. But I just want to say they were very important. Their, you know, place is still in our hearts, so that's why I'm here, just to let you guys know, they were a huge help during that flood and emergency back in September 9th. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Commissioners, other business. Commissioner McGloin?
Nope.
Commissioner Turmack?
So, yes. Katrina, you are valued to me, because I've, I've seen what you've done at 911 and at the Health Department. You know, living through the pandemic here as a commissioner, when, when this all hit, you know, we had nobody to turn to here at the county. The state, the state Health Department closed. They weren't even available. So, with the hard work of the commissioners and everyone in this building, our chief of staff, we, we got through it, and it was, it was not easy. I mean, there's so many things that I'd like to talk about, but, you know, I was not in favor of shutting down our Health Department. The building was offered to us. Governor Wolf offered the money to, to us to pay for that building. It was, it was a no-brainer. It was an opportunity for us, it was a one-in-a, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this county to develop a, a Health Department, which the need, not only for the children and youth of this, of this county, but for everyone in this county, i- it's there. The work that they do with tuberculosis, that's on the rise, and, and the AIDS virus and, and things, just everything that they deal with at a local level, where the state had two people and never even in the office. So, you have nobody to contact. A walk-in facility with the partnership with the Wright Center was just gonna be, I, I just, you know, at first, I wasn't sure, but after studying it and, and learning different things, I really grew to realize that that is something that we do, we definitely need. And, and there could be another pandemic, who knows? You, you just, we never know. We didn't expect that one. And I was at Alex Douglas's house that day when Alex came out the front door carrying stuff. I didn't even know that was his parents' house. And Katrina was there the next, that afternoon. It was devastating. But the, but the Health Department, the folks at the Health Department did step up to many people. We had places set up at the Chinchill Fire Company. I mean, it, it just goes on and on and on. It just showed me the benefit to have that Health Department here. You know, I'm disappointed. You know, I know the funding would eventually, I mean, it was cut off before it really had a time to develop, but the funding was there, it was gonna be there. And I think in the long run, it was gonna help the county and definitely save the county money. And one little other tidbit was, you know, eventually, once the medical was up and fully functioning, there was an opportunity for our Health Department to take over the medical at the prison and take care of our inmates, which costs us a lot of money every year. So, once you put that into play, I think the county was gonna really benefit having our Health Department. So, I, I'm disappointed myself, and I feel for everybody that, that put a lot of time and effort into trying to make that thing work, which it was working. But I appreciate everybody, and I'm glad you attended, and we'll see, we'll see what happens in the future. On a good note, Armed Forces Day Parade is Saturday. Let's hope the weather holds out, at least for the parade, and it starts at 11 o'clock in front of Gino Merly. There is a, the course, how it goes, it, it'll be listed on the, I know they have a Facebook page for Armed Forces Day. There'll be static displays from Toby Han Army Depot and multiple other places. At the Courthouse Square, there'll be food vendors and different things. So, hopefully, if the weather holds out, it'll be a nice day. We're looking forward to it. It's been a year in the, in the making, so let's hope for a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the Department of Health employees who got up and spoke today. And we are not, and I know Commissioner McGloin is not discounting the work that you did, but as we explained in the press conference, this really was an economic decision that we had to make. When we took office on January 2nd, we were inundated with multiple crises, one of which was the fact that we had $19 million in unpaid bills, and we have a $15 million structural deficit that is growing by the day. We're facing budgetary crisis that I'm familiar with from being a councilman in the city of Scranton. So, we inherited that problem, and also, we inherited the problem in the Office of Youth and Family Services. We have two competing things going on at the same time. On my second or third day in office, I had the application for the Department of Health on my desk, and I could've just signed it, but we wanted to do an analysis on whether or not this was the right move going forward, because obviously, all these things cost money. So, we did our due diligence over the last several months. And what our due diligence uncovered was the fact that there was no feasibility study that was done by the prior administration on whether or not it made economical sense to move forward with the Department of Health. What our due diligence uncovered was, in fact, that this department was going to cost the taxpayers a lot more money than was first explained to people when it was being developed. So, when you take all those factors into consideration, in my mind, and I know in Commissioner McGloin's mind, we had no choice but to not move forward with the Department of Health for the simple fact that we cannot afford it. We are literally staring down the barrel of millions of dollars in unpaid bills, $15 million structural deficit, a bureaucracy that currently we're having a hard time handling, where we have made progress, and then we're going to add an, an entire additional, an additional level of bureaucracy. So, to us, and in our analysis, it doesn't make sense. That does not mean that we discount the work that has been done, but as stewards of taxpayer money, and with our responsibility to the 200 and some thousand people in this county, we had no choice but to make this decision. Now, in saying that, we have asked the employees of the Department of Health if they would be interested in a new model that we described last Thursday, which would hopefully take care of, or start to take care of the issues that we're having, the real crisis that we're having in the Office of Youth and Family Services. I went out with the caseworker. That's the big problem here. That is what we need to be focusing on, not discounting the efforts that have been made, but there are many community providers in Lackawanna County that can certainly pick up the slack now that we have, are going to close the Department of Health. Unfortunately, we came into a situation where we're facing financial problems, and we could either have just blindly signed that application and moved forward, or we could've did our due diligence, which we did. We took five months to study every single issue as it relates to the Department of Health. We showed a graph last Thursday that clearly shows what taxpayers would have been racked with, which is an additional expense that we can't afford. In a perfect world, I agree with everything that was said today. It makes sense. Again, not discounting any of the work that was done, but from a financial perspective, we simply can't afford it. So, that's why we had to make this move. We're confident that with this new Office of Public Health, that we're going to be able to solve the real issues here, which are with our children and our families in Lackawanna County. We have been, we have dove really deep into this issue, and we think we're making progress, and we hope that the employees of the Department of, of Health, that they're interested, would be a part of that moving forward. Thank you. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.